One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Pillar, would you please lead us in the prayer, please?
Sure. Careful on the keys of all their heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this, and we need to be particular that we are in our mind to be thankful. And we thank you for all that you give us. We pray that in this meeting tonight, that our decisions and our actions may be pleading into you, pleading into the citizens of W.R.C. Your name is prayer, amen.
Amen. Thank you. The reading approval of minutes from now, November sixth meeting, please.
Motion approved and suspend reading.
Motion by Weidrich. Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections or changes or...
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack to approve the agenda. Second by Weidrich. Discussion? All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five A, engineers report. Jared, you're in line?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
All right, um, thank you. Thank you for calling tonight. So, you should have had the report from Grant. Just gonna go over here quick. So, as far as water sewer projects goes, we've closed out two of the three contracts. This will be the third. So, this is the work that Hand Construction performed. As you guys all know, we couldn't have closed this project with this contract out of last year. We chose to move it over because we had to run some of these things through their contract. They abandoned funding program that we have at place. So, what I have here for Hand Construction is that, um, the work has been completed. Our one minor piece for, there's a piece of concrete work that needs to be done. It's one of their subs. So, what we did on the street project in 2018, and what we're looking at to do here now is to basically close this contract out of Hand in between Monty and I when Minkler gets their final piece of concrete work done. And we'll then issue that payment directly to them. The point here is we'd like to close out the contract, issue the final balancing change order, get the funding agency off the hook, and get Hand paid and out of here. So, I'm recommending approval of the final balancing contract change order, which is pages number two, three, four, and five, your packets. Final contract, just like we did on the, uh, tank project here a couple of months ago. Final contract balancing change order is adjusting the contract price to the actual, um, constructed price. So, the $954,000 contract, um, final balancing change order will be $2,163.50. Look at pages three, four of the packet, it shows what items we went over on, which one we went under on. Um, basically, up to bottom. Anything that was substantial in nature, we capture it with the actual contract from all of course of the project. Um, if it's a little dollar, you guys already approved it. This is just showing where we came in. So, there's... The legitimate is some beating or some leg lock or some small pieces. We ended up $2,163.50 over the $0.2 million contract. So, all... Change order for the project, and then a final pay application number 11 for Hand. This is on the next pages.
Okay, so we need a, we need a motion for the $2,163.50.
Yes.
So, Dan?
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion.
Aye, Weidrich. Aye. Open hour.
Aye. Motion carried.
It's just for payment of Hand Construction, $32,289. We'll bring them to 100% complete, um, their project.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. And Monty, these funds are all still parade dog funds, correct?
Well, it's, we don't have 60% reimbursement from the state as well. Yeah.
Yeah. A motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Hack. Aye. Weidrich. Aye. Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Open hour.
Okay, so I have Expedition State subdivision. Uh, so Expedition State is being built a little differently. You know, this, this project we were just talking about was publicly bid and then built. So, Expedition State wanted to be a little privately, to return it all to their own entity when they're done. So, all in all, it's a little bit of a word in another. Um, as we discussed a while ago, stretch contractor, hot on the ground work, really has not done much work until, since we got snow on October 25th. Only did repair and prep that intersection, the, the street area from our primary residence. They're in a south side on Thursday and Friday. They hired a subcontractor to do that. That stretch and that allocation is going to remain gravel for the winter. John's there on Friday. I did not come today to look at it. Uh, the sound of things, he thought it would be suitable. It's gonna be a little soft, I'm sure, but it'll freeze solid here. Generally, that allocation will remain gravel and just the way it's gonna be until that contractor wraps things up in springtime. We have no payments to process. We have no change orders, um, tracking the progress by, by doing inspection. We have a contract performer out there, but there has not been much work happening since the 25th. I was wondering timing for snow, but they pretty much ceased all the paving operations in the state. The even contractors have done things since then that I'm aware of. Any questions on that?
No, you can move on, Jared.
Okay. All right, so Union State Bank Alley, just to kind of touch on that at a high level. You prepared the engineer report that estimated a cost and a map and a scope of work for that, that block. You guys a month ago moved the residential necessity. Um, that is gonna do is basically give those residents a chance to, uh, either share some concerns or comment on that project. I think, Monty, that's gonna end December, some point.
Correct, we have the hearing on December 18.
Okay, so if that's gonna go, then we, we set up good as far as schedule goes to, you know, proceeding the plans to deny, and then open bid sometime in January or February based on the schedule that the city code allows for for doing those types of public projects. Necessary or, what we're doing is just kind of pause and see if that goes or not. And then there's kind of a couple of little, you know, side things that I'm gonna ask you guys to sign on. If, if that alley goes, if you want us to do, I mean, include that spot repairs or that parking area next to the alley, anything, water meters, there's, there's kind of just a handful of, um, smaller, um, slanting interest like your things. It's your decision if you wanna tack them onto that project or, or not. But I, I've been intentionally waiting to see what that, how that, um, publishing and protesting is out. Unless, unless I'm wrong, I mean, unless you guys want something in advance. But I, I'm intending to just kind of come to the December meeting and see how that goes, and then we'll go from there.
No, I agree.
Then, that's what I have for my agenda. Um, kind of a slow one, so I appreciate you letting us call in. I gotta anniversary dinner to get to, so I better get my open here a little bit, but I'll be on for a little bit.
Thanks, Jared. Any questions for Jared? On the board? All right. Hagermeisters, I could really be, have you wait until the number 13, uh, in the bottom? Unless you have an anniversary dinner, you're not, you wanna be too, okay. Did you have, you have any comments or any questions tonight, or?
Um, first off, I guess, the Gush House vault was great. Couple of concerns with it though, which I'm sure the city has seen, the van hole and the water shut off right there at the intersection. Sticking up a little bit yet, just want them to be aware so nobody runs into it.
Yes, 'cause we will be moving snow eventually, aren't we?
Right.
Eventually, not soon.
Um, the only other small concern I guess we have is, you know, they stopped basically at the end of our driveway, which is fine for us to get through the winter. But in the springtime, concern is, what's gonna happen if they start working on the east of us? And how much lack of gravel is over there? Just basically contractors come in, now it's, it's gonna make a mess again, which I guess we have to deal with, we have to deal with. Um, the only other thing, um, I guess it's, is Jared still on?
Yeah, Jared, you still there?
I'm here.
Um, basically what we're wondering is, is do we have a timeline going forward for next year? Some, some of a plan? You know what I mean?
Jared, have, have you seen or heard anything from Williams on what is, is as soon as it starts, or what are we? What, is there, is there anything written down?
We, we were working under the assumption that everything's gonna be done in 2023. Now, and so I will request a, a schedule from their, their project manager, and I will give it to the city. And I'm sure John will give it to you folks, too.
And then would you also touch base with Daryl to see what the plan is of, you know, are they, you know, how much are, I'm sure they're gonna be working on framing and everything through the winter on that house.
Jerry? I don't think, but I mean...
Oh, they're not gonna?
They're...
Oh. Okay. Till next spring. Okay. All right.
I'm assuming with this going forward, that none of this is gonna be televised. The sewer lines won't be televised until they get done with the rest of the Otter Creek Loop.
Jared, do you have any idea where they're gonna televise again for, make sure everything's good to go?
Um, I don't know if it's be televised, getting anything this summer or not. We haven't been given the tapes yet. I, I'm not, I'm not sure. We did talk to them about having it televised intermittently so that they didn't get too far ahead. I don't, I don't know what, but that isn't on the list. We can't quote the job until we have the tapes.
Right. Okay.
Jared, hey, this is Buster. Just a question on, on the potential paving that was supposed to be done in front of those units to the south. Is it feasible to do, uh, uh, some of that paving next spring? Because, you know, that whole loop isn't gonna get finished until who knows when. And if they have to wait until that whole loop is ripped apart, that paving won't happen until probably August or September again.
All I can do is ask for the schedule once we're started with, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good. You saw everyone's aware of it.
They have two lots of underground to do. So, I mean, in a perfect world, they would get in there first thing in the spring, we'd be paving it by June. But I, I can't say. I, I don't know.
And they're not gonna pay mobilization of, of asphalt contractor twice than we think?
Well, I was thinking if there's, happens to be a unit in the area, you know, like they had anticipated this fall.
Well, I, you know, I spoke with Bechtold, and they were gonna come. But they are in Tioga, and they got sidetracked there, so they couldn't get here.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what the...
I'm not sure if the county will be doing something or not.
I don't know.
But can we for sure know that Williams has a paving company on contract for next year?
Jared should be able to find that out kind of thing.
I'm assuming it's still Bechtold.
I think they have hired Bechtold P.A. to complete the paving.
Right. When I talked to Clary, that's from Bechtold. That's the company that was gonna come, so I'm assuming it's still the same one, hold up, double check. Absolutely. Yep.
I, I will ask them for those, those documents now, for a while.
Thank you, Jared. Uh, six A, free reduced hall rent for heritage insurance. So, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Six B, 2024 Convention and Visitors Bureau budget. You also have a copy of that. Antoinette and I are on that board, and so is Buster.
So, I guess I would ask if there's any questions in terms of where things are at. One of the things that I would point out is this, we're anticipating a little more revenue this year because of, we're seeing some increase in hospitality tax. So, and by our bylaws, we have to put 25% of those dollars in the reserve account. So, that would be the, the one change that you see. Everything else is pretty straightforward relative to where things are at on the... Any questions? I could share with the board that the, the CBB board has gone on record to contribute $2,500 a year for 10 years to haze the winter sports with the two sign that went up in the corner there. And that, and those dollars would be coming out of the reserve fund. So...
One more, Stern.
Yeah. Yeah. So...
Any questions for Buster, or Antoinette, or myself? Move, uh, CBB 2024 budget. Motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich. Aye. Stern. Aye. Hack. Aye. Pillar.
Aye.
Open hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Nine A, water sewer hydrant extenders.
So, I, I had conversation, I had a conversation this week with our Water Works representative, Jared, and he had identified eight spider hydrants within the city limit that are relatively short and can be problematic come winter time, accessing them and servicing them. And so, they, they make these extension kits. I gotta go ahead and get the quote for it, that should be on your documents there. Um, so, I, I talked to Monty. We have the funds available, uh, on this calendar year. And this is work that Jared can do. He can actually do this in winter as well, because you do not have to isolate the individual hydrants to put these extenders on there. So, tonight I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and acquire all eight of those extension kits that the Dollar Mount that has noted in the paperwork there.
Okay, a motion by Pillar to purchase the eight extension kits, the total of $9,390. And there'd be no labor, 'cause Jared would be doing the work on these.
Right.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. So, the reason for this? These is just, these are just that, this whole access and snow's gonna get too hard.
The majority of our hydrants are between two and a half to three feet in, in height of there for serviceability and access for the emergency crew out there. And we've got a lot of them that are, that are below that. And we ask our citizens to be kind and, and to help itself with gaining access or moving and all that stuff around these things. Sometimes that doesn't always happen, so by putting these extension kits on there, that gives us greater visibility and access to these, these hydrants.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich. Aye. Hack. Aye. Stern.
No.
Open hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Anything else, Dan, on the water sewer garbage?
Uh, we are going to be reposting the position for the, um, street group. And so, that should be going out to the streets shortly here. We had, we had a couple of applicants that came in the last floor up, and we'll put it out there. And as we were preparing to do some interviewing and stuff like that, um, some of the dynamics changed. One of the individuals had accepted a job with another organization. So, we'd like to have a larger pool of individuals to address that situation, and that will be fruitful shortly here. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. All right, street cemetery.
Have you got anything before I bring up the...
No, not right now.
Okay. A while back, I got some miniature on, basically, it's cremation, what do you wanna call it? Vaults?
Vault.
Vaults?
Yeah, those pictures are...
So, I did a little behind the scenes, and I did talk to our local funeral director, Joe. And this was brought to his attention several years ago. And he said he did some investigating on this stuff. And if he was to do it, no cost to any city, I mean, at that time, it was 15,000 to 20,000. You know, I, I wanted to, any legalities in the state of North Dakota? And really, it's not common for people to have a scatter site either. But there is monte corrective amount. There is scatter sites in other communities for cremation ashes, which I think is a little groovy. But, um, this is just kind of a discussion piece. Yeah, it's gonna, if you wish, I could have Joe, see if he could come in our next meeting and discuss it a little more, since he's a little more in that realm. I'd be more willing to talk to him about that.
If I may, I, I have a couple of comments.
Please, go ahead, Dan.
So, we, at, at English Lutheran in Hazen, we had some discussions with regard to this topic a year or two ago. And, uh, and as it relates to the city cemetery, you know, one of the things that for, I would say, long-term planning, you only have so much land. And, uh, this, this would be an opportunity, uh, for thinking about the future. A lot of people have gone down the path of using cremation versus the full body burial with caskets. And, uh, putting one of these type of, uh, spits out there in the cemetery would use up a small amount of footprint. Uh, so it would open up, you know, for, for years and years of service to our, our citizens. So, it's, it's something I guess I would promote. I don't know that it's something that we need to move on now, but the sooner something like this here, if we're moving forward, the sooner we build it, uh, the, the cheaper it's going to be. And it probably in the long run would be cheaper than trying to acquire additional land and stuff like that for, for future growth of cemetery space. So, just, just some boot for thought there. And you may be able to, you may be able to reach out to, to some of the, the churches in the community as well that do not have their own cemeteries, that are, the land is assigned to, to those particular churches. They may have some opportunity for, for some financial support to tip in in addition to the city. So, that might be some, something for, to think about as we move forward.
Hey, that's a good idea, Dan. I know I've talked to, uh, people, people from two other churches other than English Lutheran, and they have heard from their, um, people that they would like to see this as well. I know I've, I've heard personally, you know, a couple of people that would love to see this happen in, in Hazen. Uh, Joe, at one point, about five or six years ago, Barbo was looking at possibly doing this. He said it's gotten too expensive, and he, you know, there's no, you know, it would take him 20 years to recoup his money at this point, probably. But, uh, you know, there's a lot more, a lot more, um, I don't know if I'd say need, but a lot more, um, people are showing interest in having one of these.
That's, it's more affordable, and you're talking with them, not talking about death, but there are also more families doing rental caskets. He said, "You never saw that when he got into business." But he said, "There is a lot more cremation going on."
Rental caskets?
Yeah. Basically, it's, they have a kit of, of cloth, we'll call it loings. That all comes out. You just have the shell, and it, it's kind of a body. Weird to me, but it, it's very popular.
Okay.
And so is the cremation. He said, "We're, you know, he said, "I'm not out to make money," but he said, "There's more people that are going to cremation out 'cause it's more affordable."
Yes, he's getting a lot more requests for it.
Yeah.
Monty, if we were to move forward with this, where, where in our vast budget, with all the different lighting, would something like this fall under? You have reserve funds set up in the cemetery fund, which would cover the cost of purchasing one of these. We'd have to get an idea of what the concrete and, and, uh, setting up the crane and everything would cost. But there are funds available in the cemetery fund. And then obviously, you'd recoup some of that cost, similar to what we do with burial plots. You sell those based on a number that'll help you recoup those costs.
I can't remember, Monty. In that particular picture, how many spaces are there? I mean, there's different...
Yeah, there's different ones. The one, a couple they quoted, one was a 48 niche, and they go, they go up to a 72 niche. Right now, the one 48 niche is roughly $16,000 after their discount. is roughly sixteen thousand dollars after their discount. Plus, plus this doesn't include any shipping costs or the concrete to set it and, and the equipment to set it. So you're probably around that twenty thousand dollar.
I think it'd be good to get a little, little survey of our community churches to see if, you know, a couple of church cemeteries are pretty full. You know, if we provided a spot in the city cemetery, you know, then they, those churches can use it if they want to. I don't know, something that, something considered to help pay for it, I guess.
If you send a letter, I'll tell them.
Sure. Okay. All right.
What do we need to do to have a more precise idea of what the, the overall cost would be? So if, if we get some affirmation back from these churches that they would participate, so that we could communicate some detail to them as well, if they wanted to be part of in a particular project?
The only thing we need to get yet would be, get a couple estimates from local contractors to pour the slab to whatever specifications they need. And then if they can give me a better idea as to the shipping costs, as far as the crane, I know if we work with Western Steel, we can probably, you know, work with them to get the crane and figure out based on how many hours they think it would take to get some tighter numbers.
Can we get kind of a rough, for the communication ladder that you send out, Monty, to these churches, maybe get a, a rough dollar amount for the forty-eight unit and a seventy-two unit? And then based upon what type of need or, or interest we might see from, from the community that might help us make a decision later on?
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, so no action this evening. We'll continue discussion and see what kind of interest we have. All right, moving on, finance bussing.
So I don't have anything this time.
Okay. Police, fire, forestry.
We got some estimates to remove a couple trees before Mike decided to turn in his resignation letters. Two different bids, which are nice, one for Turner's and, uh, what's that one? This is?
Seven arrows.
Bueller.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Dave was going to look at that one to see if it was something that our group they do or not. I forgot to even go.
With a small crew at all, it would, it would be tough. If we were full staffed one, we could draw the capital, but it was more than all. We've pretty much not used any of our forestry budget. So there's lots of money available in there, you know, haven't had much of a forestry in the entire year.
Well, the difference is about a thousand dollars, twelve hundred, twelve hundred dollars difference.
That's pretty big, yeah.
Seven arrows out of Bueller is, is twelve hundred dollars cheaper.
I guess I haven't seen what kind of quality of work they do.
It's good work.
It is good work, okay. I'd like to make a motion to go with the arrow tree service out of Bueller then.
Second, motion by Weidrich, second by Stern, discussion.
This is work that they were doing before. No, my idea?
I guess I didn't even talk to him at all, Dan. Uh, Mike left me a voicemail. I tried calling him back like the next day and he'd already turned in his resignation letters. I don't have really any information on it at all.
We can, we can, Monty, call tomorrow to see what the schedule looks like.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried.
All right, we were also awarded a back the blue grant from the 2023 North Dakota Legislature possession. Hazen was awarded eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There's only three things that that money can be used for. Um, retention, hiring bonuses, and tuition. Um, and it, there ain't really much clarification on the tuition part from, but both me and Monty get out of it. It's like if you're sending somebody to the academy, um, which hopefully we don't have to do that anytime soon. Um, me and Monty and Jim did talk about it the other day. Jim would like to see it all be used from my interpretation of his wording as retention bonuses yet this year. Me and Monty would kind of like to see some, some smaller retention bonuses go out this year. And we have until March of twenty-five to use it. We already have the cost. So we would like to give out bonuses yet this year, hopefully to get them out before Christmas so they can use them for whatever they need to use them for. But then retain the rest, just in case we do lose an officer. Maybe we can offer a hiring bonus if somebody decides to move on. And if not, then, you know, maybe before Christmas of twenty-four, the rest of it would go out. But we're also wondering what you guys want to do with it, you know?
I'd like to see it go to our existing officers as well. Um, I do like the, the idea of some now, some later. What are you thinking about for, if we did portion now?
I was kind of thinking a thousand per officer now. You know, it's a decent sized bonus. And then leave the rest in case we do leave one, lose one. And then if not, before Christmas of next year, they get the rest of it, you know, which might help retain some officers too, knowing that that's, bonus is coming if they don't stay, you know? Yep. I mean, a motion on that at all, Monty, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I will make a motion to give out a thousand dollar retention bonuses to each of the four officers and leave the rest until next year, just in case.
Okay. We have a motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Well, it's nice that the legislature did that.
Yep, I'll help.
Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried.
All right. For the fire department, I got a couple of runs. So these runs would be for, what, one through November? So half of December and half of November, we had a motor vehicle accident on Highway forty-nine and two hundred. Uh, motor vehicle accident on Highway two hundred and an animal survived. So just, just the two accidents in the last month. It's always a good sign. And that's all ahead.
Okay. Questions for Weidrich?
Do you have anything to add, Tony?
Um, we, we've been hammered away in the mornings. Seems like everyone follows the semis coming in, so they kind of pace them. So we're trying to hammer the semis, get them to slow down on two hundred coming to town. Uh, we're getting stop signs a lot more. Uh, the other day, I was on day shift, we actually had, uh, well, let's, let's go back. So the night before, a deputy and officer buyer stopped an individual on a bicycle. He was, uh, I think it was after midnight, after one somewhere. Uh, we've been in another row just doing what they do that early in the morning. And they got a search off of him. Um, they got a lot of product, uh, ready to distribute. So as far as I know, he was a, he's a, he's on federal probation. So he went straight there, was jailed. I believe Liza Taylor, Mercer's parole probation officer, he's with her too. So in that, we were able to get a probation search on his house. Um, was it five oh five, Fourth Avenue Northeast, the old Bobby Cochran place? So he lives in the other, in the other side. Uh, we, we were able to get in there, get more product, more para. We actually found a female in there with product and para, so we got them off the street. Um, in theory, with him being federal probation, hopefully that speeds up him taking out for a while. Uh, I did try and get his side of the house condemned. Um, in researching that, it actually, in my opinion, gives us a little more tools in our toolbox. So I talked to Monty about this, uh, the way the city ordinance goes. As long as the dwelling has fixtures, you know, toilets, sinks, um, you know, the utensils to live, you can legally live in that building without utilities. Because there wasn't any running water. He was using propane tanks to heat. Um, I mean, the place was trashed. Uh, there was a dog in there and there was, you know. So we couldn't get it that way. So we went through, I believe, was it Western?
Western Plains Health.
Western Plains Health Department. Uh, we have two avenues with that. The speedy way would have been to, which is what I did, um, I think it's no occupancy or something like that, is the way it was worded. But because there's no running water, which is the factor, it doesn't matter about heat or power or anything, it's the water. Because there was no water to that, we just proved there's no water and they can't go in there at night. They can go in during the day, make repairs, things like that. Uh, but at night, you can't live there. Now, if we go a step further, um, we can get a health department representative to come up here. We walk through, if we can get access to the unit, they look at it, they consider it condemned, and they either fix it, or they tear it down, or do whatever it is. Um, but, you know, you tape it up, lock it up, and they can't do anything. We weren't going to have access and I, the representative I was talking to couldn't make it out until next week. Um, so I put the no occupancy on it. And downside with that is the minute you put, you know, water in there, it just boils it up. And as far as I know, they have water within hours. Um, and they tore it, signed down. So, but there is a couple of places, one being the trailer park right across from the, uh, escape park. Uh, I know what that looks like inside and so does the other.
One right on the corner, one on the corner?
Yep, yep, right there, right off from the RV park. Um, I'm pretty sure I can get access to that. And I've got a pretty good rapport with the owner. And what I have found is they're kind of using that, they're, all, everybody's connected in that sort of line of things they do. So they're kind of using it as a dive. They need a place to stay. The guy who was in there earlier, he's gone now. We've got him out of there, but it's just, you know, there's holes in the walls, there's holes in the floor.
One of them's broken.
Yeah. The other officer, she was able to go in there and take a look at it. And we had an issue with him. And yeah, it's, it's not livable enough by any means. So if I can get a representative down here and get access, we can go through there and shut it down. And they either gotta fix that whole thing, which is going to cost them probably pretty many, or they can just tear it out of there. And that'll take one place out for the count, you know, they'll just shack it up in there.
Monty, is there still a program for us to use to get through them trailers or?
We've had an annual program. We haven't heard back on our grant application yet. I didn't apply for that this fall for that.
Okay.
Mark? That may bring up something that I've been working with some of the other communities that I represent to update some of their ordinances and things like that to allow for, I'll say, a little more flexibility for condemnation type actions and to improve things like they've got to have running water, it's a livable space, they've got to have heat sources, things of that nature. Um, in part so that you've got a little more leverage for, um, keeping the house, not the health, uh, the house and the community clean, but also so there's a little bit more leverage for local law enforcement to, you know, allegations of kids and things like that, that you can say, hey, look, there's a broken out window here. It's January, we need to do something with that. And that may be something worth while to take a look at some of the updates that I provided some of the other communities. Um, it's been a little while since I've looked at your guys' ordinances, but I know.
We should look at that closely.
The, the last, just this year, I think I've updated two out of the five cities that I represent.
So last time we had a house condemned in Cawdell, it, it takes six, six, eight months, it seemed like this.
Well, the two I'm looking at is the one I mentioned, right across from the escape park. The other one is right next to my trailer. Um, I know that guy's on the run. Um, I guess the brother, it's the old Matt Bear place. The brother has told me, or the brother has told Sheriff's Department that he's coming in to tear that out because that's apparently his.
Matt's brother is?
Yeah. So he wants that trailer out of there. He wants no, no more Matt stuff. So, I mean, those are the two I'm looking at.
Monty, last time we checked, was any of it in, is it all in Matt's name still or is it his brother's?
Last I checked, everything was dated over the map.
Okay. But again, there's, you know, that, can, can his brother tear all of his stuff out of his, his name's out?
Well, as I say, it's either his brother's on the trailer or the brother's on the land.
Okay.
It's one of the two. His brother has some sort of rights to something.
I'd love to see it done.
I just kind of listened to the rumor and I heard more rumors from it. Um, I haven't really, you know, I haven't really looked into it hard until I, until I got this thing the other day. So, I mean, if that's, like I said, that's potentially some more tools in our toolbox that we can use.
Yeah. So an arrest, paraphernalia, drugs, whatever.
Yeah.
By pulling over a person on a bike.
Yes.
Shows how, sometimes how insignificant something can be that can lead to something bigger.
And this guy, he's normally out, you know, out of the bar earlier in the mornings. Um, I don't know what he was doing on a bike that led to getting pulled over, but it must have been.
Why did he? And I know that house is for sale, by the way.
I'm pretty sure if you go give him like seventeen dollars, he'd give it to you.
Buster, you're the housing, Buster, you're the housing authority. Ain't that be a good project here, Buster, to buy that property and get it, get it, get it done. I think they're asking more than seventeen, but yeah. Thanks, appreciate it. Buster, you're up.
Okay, well, the only thing that I'll talk about is, I'm sure everybody is aware of the Talon announcement that was made about, you know, eventually coming to Mercer County now. We're hoping that we'll actually have representatives in Mercer County after, uh, the Easter break, or Easter, uh, let's strike Thanksgiving. Probably that Monday or Tuesday after Thanksgiving. We're just waiting on some of their itineraries to see where things are at in the.
From Talon.
Yes, from Talon. And the, and the idea would be is, is that maybe, you know, the, uh, a formal announcement or something, uh, which is, occurs more locally than what the governor put on and what happens. So, so it's just kind of a wait and see yet. So it's just kind of a wait and see yet.
Yeah. All right. Um, the only thing I want to mention is, you know, that hearing on the December eighteenth. You know, there's, last week we had a hearing here as well for the alley behind the post office, and there was quite a, quite a bit of discussion at that meeting. So, um, I'll probably talk to each of you individually about that this week, but it's, yeah. All right, moving on. Eleven A, board appointment for housing authority. We have two, correct, Buster?
Two interested people in this position.
Kim Folkerts and Nancy Wolf are the two people that are interested for the one, one position.
Correct.
And it's, it's up to us to appoint one of those two, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As you know, Nancy is a conservative citizen, obviously been on this board as well. Uh, Kim currently works and has training with, with these, these types of things as well. I, I think we're lucky to have two people that will do good on.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Folkerts to the board.
Okay, we have a motion by Weider to appoint Kim Folkerts to the housing authority. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weider, I, Stern.
Aye.
Hack. I, Taylor. I, Omen Hour.
All right, motion carried. Twelve A, two thousand twenty-four safety goal. Monty, what did you say?
We recently had our workforce safety audit, and one of the things they always discuss is some goals for the coming year. So Kami sat down with our representative, came up with these goals. Well, one of our big ones has always been strain and sprain injuries, so the first goal is to have zero strain or sprain injuries for twenty-four and no lost time acts claims for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Kami is working with, uh, North Dakota Safety Council regarding the slips, trips, and falls, where they actually have a simulator that they can bring out here to do a training on slips, trips, and falls. So she is working on that. Uh, ninety percent participation in the safety training program each month. Um, just basic things to try and keep everybody safe. And the, the fifth one there is to do a safety survey. We, it's been probably five years since we did our last safety survey to see how the employees feel our safety programs are and what, what moves work. And I know Kami and Dave and Jared have already started working on S, updating the SDS binders to keep everything up to date. So those are the safety goals, and then she did revisit our, basically our orientation safety rules that we address with everybody that gets hired, and then they get into more detailed stuff depending on which department they're in. So I guess at this point, we would just ask your approval of the goals for twenty twenty-four.
Need that a motion, Monty?
Yes, please.
And make a motion to approve that as presented.
Motion by Taylor.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion.
Kudos to her, it looks really nice.
Yeah. Roll call.
Taylor. I, Hack. I, Stern.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Omen Hour.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. All right, uh, also under new business is January first, that's the first Monday of the month. Does anybody have any issues with moving that, our meeting to Tuesday the second? Dan, are you back still, or how long you?
I will, I will be in town in Hazen the, the first and the second, so.
Okay.
But the second works good, better for me.
Okay, you never met, okay. Monty, City Hall's closed on the first, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So if no one has any issues with that, then let's, let's move to Tuesday the second, please. Okay? Perfect. All right, thirteen, public comments. Think we have anything else? Okay. All right, approval of the bills, please. Motion by Weider to approve the bills.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion.
I do have one more. Kami just finished processing the utility bills, so there would be a three hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents to the postal service for postage.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Weider.
Aye.
Hack. I, Taylor. I, Stern.
Aye.
Omen Hour.
All right, motion carried. Me adjourned. Thank you all.